Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call to order the July 22 Shelby Township Planning Commission meeting. Secretary Moore, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Ms. Cassali is absent. Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Oppone?
Here.
Mr. Larray?
Here.
Chairman Moffett is out this evening. Acting Vice Chair Phil Turner will be our chairman.
Here. Thank you.
We have a quorum.
Very good. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for this evening from July 24, 2024?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Also with us this evening, we have our township planner Julie Misich, associate planner Nick Fiori, and to my right township attorney this evening, Rosemary Davis. First item on our agenda is a conditional rezoning and site plan number 23-16 for Giuseppe Vitale, 55274 Van Dyke Avenue. It's located north of 25 Mile Road on the east side of Van Dyke. A conditional rezoning from R1C, one-family residential, to C2 linear retail. This is a re-review for a warehouse. This was scheduled originally for our April 22 meeting, but it was removed at the applicant's request to give them time to address the department comments raised by the planning department, so.
Vice Chair Turner, can we approve the agenda before we move on to that item, please?
Oh, did I get that? Okay. Now that I said all that, we'll just do the agenda first. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Julie. Now, having said what I already said, I'm not going to repeat it, but the applicant is here for Giuseppe Vitale. They can come on down and let us know what they're going to be doing. And Mr. Ruggeri?
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Phil Ruggeri, appearing on behalf of the petitioner, Mr. Vitale. He's currently in Italy and Gasper Monaco, his nephew, he was supposed to be here, but I think we can proceed accordingly. As you all know, this matter has come before you in the past. This is a re-review. The property itself is located at 25 Mile and Van Dyke at the northeast corner. Everybody knows it as Vincent Joe's. It's been a pillar in our community, great destination location, and it's surrounded by commercial zoning to the north, southwest, and to the east with the flood plain and the vegetation. It's an R1B and R1C combination. Our master land use plan allows for community commercial for this particular location, and as indicated in the report by the planner Julie, it seems to be in compliance with the future master land use plan. But basically, and in a nutshell, this is an auxiliary building that is a necessity for Mr. Vitale and his center. He's busting at the seams for storage. He has some vacant units within the complex that he's utilizing for storage, and that's got a positive and a negative impact. Certainly has some storage availability, but you're also denying the opportunity to fill those units with businesses that could thrive in that center. It can also add more dollars to the community and also for the petitioner. The building is in an obscure location. It's located in the rear, which is the north part of the center. It has its own back road where the deliveries are continuous currently. The building has to have a cost factor that makes sense, and what he's been doing is just trying to tailor it so that it makes it feasible to build. And I think they've come to an understanding by reducing the size and providing the color block instead of all brick like we've got in the center. Makes a lot of sense. Obviously, you want a very aesthetic building if you're seeing that building on a regular basis driving by, but it's not going to be seen. The only people that are going to know it's there is probably all of us. And you'll have adequate screening to the north. You've got a natural vegetation and screening to the east, which is about 135 feet of vegetation. So I think in that regard, we've got it screened pretty well, and the rest is blocked by the building itself. Now, we've gone down from 15,000 square feet to 11,600, which is a significant drop from the original petition, and I believe the architectural design will meet the criteria that I think we're trying to establish here. And I think it's important to note that this is an investor in our community. He's been here a long time. He built that center when it was a risk factor way back before a lot of the development has occurred in our area. So I think it's important that we try to reward those that invest in our community by helping them in their business an opportunity. So I think this is a key example of where we should try to meet the, or accommodate the petitioner by having a building that makes sense economically, but yet doesn't deteriorate from what we're trying to achieve here architecturally. And I think Julie's done a nice job in analyzing the entire petition and has recommended approval for it. And I think we look forward to going forward with our engineering. Obviously, it's subject to their approval going through. We have some challenges, and I think we can meet them. But I leave it in your hands and for any comments that you might have. But I think this is a very plus and dynamic building that'll help not only the business, it'll help us as customers. I go there every weekend. And I'll tell you, those aisles are just jammed with inventory, and it's very difficult to meander around. But same token, if he can buy and store goods on a bulk basis, he gets a better price. And ultimately, that price transgresses directly to us as consumers. We benefit from it. He gets a little lower price. He has more sales, more opportunity to save a few bucks here and there. In today's world, you need to do that because things are so costly. I mean, I saw eggs, $2.49 a dozen. I know my prices because I go all the time. But they used to be $89.99. I mean, it's crazy. It might sound like a miniscule number, but that's a lot for the average consumer. And I think everybody's trying to find ways to save money, and I think Mr. Vitale found an opportunity, and I think we need to help him in this regard. So I leave it up to you. Your discretion is going to be important in how this goes, so. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Julie, we'll jump over to you for your review first.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair. As Mr. Ruggeri indicated, another preliminary review was performed on this site plan. It's a two-part plan. They're asking for a conditional rezoning and site plan review for this building. They have met mostly all of the requirements that are listed in the site plan comments. There's still some minor comments that they need to address, but those are minor in scope and can easily be addressed. Some of the engineering comments will be addressed during the engineering review process of this plan. So once the planning commission either moves forward this plan or not, it will be addressed at the engineering phase of this review. I don't have any objections to this site plan moving forward. The only thing that I wanted to mention is just the brick facade on this building. I mean, moving it to a colored block makes sense. It is going to be behind the building and not easily visible. There's a lot of vegetation along 25 Mile, and it's set back towards the corner of the building. But as far as the two-part application, the rezoning is going from residential to C1 to combine it and unify the zoning of these properties.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Ruggeri? If not, motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snyder.
Move to approve to the township board for conditional rezoning and site plan 23-16 Giuseppe Vitale, Vitale Plaza LLC, 55274 Van Dyke Avenue, parcel number 230703351014, located north of 25 Mile Road on the east side of Van Dyke Avenue. Proposed warehouse and conditional rezoning from R1C, one-family residential, to C2 linear retail business based on the following. The change in zoning is consistent with the development pattern in the area. The change in zoning would provide a more uniform and consistent development pattern, and the change in zoning will not adversely impact any abutting development.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Snyder, supported by Commissioner Oppone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, drew a blank, Jim. I'm sorry. Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Have a good night. The next item is a site plan number 24-12 for Giovanni Aluia, Olympia Homes, 49480 Van Dyke Avenue, located north of 22 Mile Road on the east side of Van Dyke, retail shopping center and an office building. Mr. Snyder is here. He's eager to get to work. So Pete, tell us what you got.
Thank you. Good evening again. For the record, Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, representing the applicant Giovanni Aluia and Olympia Homes. This is a two-acre site just north of Grace off of Van Dyke on the east side of Van Dyke. It actually has split zoning. The front is zone C2, the back is zoned office. It was approved for a site plan with all variances back in 2005. And the initial, when we turned this in the first time a few months ago, and it went through preliminary reviews, we basically turned in that site plan. I wasn't super comfortable with that version of the site plan anymore, but it had been approved, and it was what the client was expecting at the time. It hit preliminary reviews, and Julie and I both sort of said, yeah, we can do a lot better with this. So we've brought it back a second time. This version has a little less retail in the front. It's a lot more usable. The drive-through is on the north. The prior site plan had it on the south. We've baked in some potential restaurant seating into the retail. The prior site plan didn't have anything for anything other than retail, which is, of course, sometimes a parking problem if you get a restaurant or even a high-intensity commercial use. And then the office building in the rear, which is on the 01 portion of the site, it's about 6,000 square feet. Yeah, I should have mentioned the fronts, a little over 10,000 square feet on the retail, and it's almost 6,000 square feet on the office. That office building actually is proposed for use by the applicant. They currently occupy one of the buildings that's on this property, and they are building their new office in the rear. So that's why you'll see a phase line on here because they want to build that office in the back, move out into the new office building, and then build out the front, build out the retail. So I could run through the plans if you want, or if you have any specific questions. From my standpoint, it was fairly straightforward, a slightly compact project, so I don't feel like I have to go through it. But if you'd like me to pay a little more attention to any part of it, certainly let me know. I've got it loaded up here on the PDF on the screen.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Any questions?
Julie?
Thank you, Chairman. As Mr. Snyder indicated, we sat down and met. We improved this plan significantly. With the first version, there was a number of variances that would have been required with the new plan. With the adjustments that were made, there are no variances. They meet all the zoning ordinance requirements. Those uses are permitted use by right in that zoning district with the split zoning there. Actually, I have no other comments. I mean, there are some comments in the site plan review comments that are easily addressable to move forward with this project.
All right. Thank you. I have one question. Pete, do you know what kind of a restaurant you're going to have for the drive-through?
They've actually not picked. They don't have a particular user in mind. They've been talking to a few, but they don't have anybody committed. Or if they do, they haven't told me.
All right. Any commissioners have any questions? Hearing none. Motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve site plan number 24-12 for Giovanni Aluia, Olympia Homes, 49420 and 49480 on Van Dyke Avenue, parcel number 23-07-22-303-040, located north of 22 Mile Road on the east side of Van Dyke Avenue for retail shopping center and office building. The approval is subject to the submission of final revised site plans addressing all department, engineer, and planning commission comments.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Larray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
I'm going to get this right now. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Good night, Pete. Next item is site plan 24-22 for Richard Hotea, H.I.P. Corp. LLC, 14017 23 Mile Road, located on the north side of 23 Mile Road, east of Shana Road, requesting a permanent roll-off dumpster. So go ahead, state your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Hotea. Address says 14017 23 Mile. President of H.I.P. Corp. Holdings Company and owner-operator of Performance Remodeling. Started in business in 2006. I used to rent a building down on Filomena, about a 5,000-square-foot building, and I've been fortunate enough to be able to grow. And in 2017, we were able to have a building built for us, which is the one that we're talking about right here. I'm not sure how it happened, but somehow in the plan, a roll-off dumpster wasn't part of the plan. A friend of mine, Gene DiAgostini, built the building for us. At the time, I'm not sure exactly how that was overlooked. We did have a roll-off dumpster at our site on Filomena. I'm not sure how I can operate without it. You know, we're doing close to 1,500 homes a year. A lot of windows and doors come back to our location. They're pretty good size, and this roll-off dumpster is pretty important to us. It's in an area that's really non-invisible, you know, from 23 Mile, also from Filomena. We pay a lot of attention to it. I have two warehouse employees that are constantly just addressing the dumpster, making sure it looks good, making sure nothing's coming over top of it. I also go as far as getting a third-party company called Smash My Trash. They come in twice a week to just kind of smash the dumpster down so it makes sure it looks good, nothing's coming out of the dumpster. Again, I don't know, you know, how I can operate without it. I can't put this kind of a dumpster at a job site in a residence. It's a fairly large dumpster, steel. You know, so we're looking to be able to, you know, have a permanent roll-off dumpster there. It does get swapped out probably twice a month, three times a month, you know, when we're doing good. So looking to be able to have that as a permanent part of the plan.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a couple of questions before we head over to our planner for his review. Did I understand you when you said, was it the intent for you to have a roll-off dumpster on the plan originally and never got in there? Did I hear you correctly?
Yes. Yeah, I used to rent a building that had a roll-off dumpster, you know, as part of that deal. And when we had this building built, I'm not sure, it's my first time contracting a building to be built. I'm not sure how that got overlooked. Gene knew it was important to us. He knew I couldn't really operate without it. I'm not trying to throw him underneath the bus or anything. I'm just kind of in a pickle right now, you know.
You said that the Smash My Trash, interesting name, they come in twice a week, and they just like compact it down in the dumpster?
Yeah, it's pretty interesting. They got a truck that comes in kind of with a boom, and on the end of it's kind of a large metal drum, and they just kind of roll and beat the dumpster down.
Now, you had said that you've got employees that address the dumpster, keep the area clean, kind of?
Yep, two warehouse employees, full-time employees.
We have some photos that don't quite show that. Now, I do appreciate, I was out there Saturday, and it is all cleaned up back there, but I can tell you, some of the concern is when you've got a dumpster like that sitting out in the open, that could become a problem for not just your site, but the site abutting you. If Smash My Trash only smashes you once a week instead of twice, is there an issue where this could become a problem again, where we have some ordinance issues?
I'll do everything it takes for it not to come back, you know, to you guys as an issue. You know, at any given point in time, you could wander back there. It might not look the greatest, but I can just assure you that, you know, most of the time you're going to come back there, it's going to look tight. I can't account for sometimes on a weekend, you know, but certainly throughout the week before we wrap up on Saturday, everything's getting addressed. And I've not had any issues. I've not had any complaints. I've not had anybody get injured. I've not had anybody come to my building and say, hey, you know, clean this place up. I think I've dealt with, I think we had you guys come out one time. But it's not been an issue. I've been there for, you know, since 2017. It's really not been an issue.
Okay, the hope would be that even on the weekends and the weekdays, that the area would stay clean and presentable as much for not just you, but for your neighboring properties there.
We respect that. We'll do whatever we can, you know, to make sure that that looks good whenever you guys come back there, you know.
Okay. We'll send it over to Nick. I've got a question about the screening of this, too, we need to address. But Nick, go ahead.
This property is zone LM. It's light manufacturing with the LM district. One of the principal permitted uses is accessory outdoor storage. There's a variety of things that can be considered accessory outdoor storage. In this case, the roll-off dumpster, as it is part of the operations of the day-to-day business of the business, we consider that accessory outdoor storage for the operations of the business. So typically, that's permitted by right in that light manufacturing district, but we do have certain standards that we require the outdoor storage to meet. One of those is making sure that the outdoor storage is indicated on a site plan, which is why Mr. Hotea is here today, to make sure that it's identified on a site plan that can be approved by the township. The second one is that there is screening required for outdoor storage in that light manufacturing district. The screening is limited to a chain link or pressure-treated obscuring wood fence or masonry wall, not less than four feet or more than eight feet high. So it's basically just adding a wall to obscure the vision of any sort of outdoor storage, whether that be equipment, supplies, vehicles, or in this case, a roll-off dumpster. The applicant, Mr. Hotea, has proposed to put the dumpster on the northwest corner of the property, but has omitted screening. And the reason behind that is because there is a storm sewer easement on the west side of the property. This is a fairly shallow stormwater easement, a storm sewer easement with a pipe that's close to the surface, and the Department of Public Works would not permit any footings for fencing to be put within that easement due to the depth of that pipe. So screening there with fencing may not be practical, but if the planning commission does, you know, see it reasonable to approve the location of the dumpster, it will get to the zoning board of appeals to review the screening proposed or a lack of screening and to thereby impose any sort of reasonable conditions like adding street trees perhaps on the street frontage to add some enhanced screening to the property when there's not cars there screening the dumpster. Besides that, there's really not too much else to go off. The site is compliant with all of our ordinances. Mr. Hotea has been cited by our code enforcement officers before for outdoor storage, but with the exception of this dumpster, everything else has been addressed, as well as the maintenance of the property. So this is the last item remaining to close out that enforcement from the township.
Okay, thank you, Nick. I will say, when I did go out to your property on Saturday, when I pulled around the corner, it was screened because you had a trailer and you had a pickup truck sitting in front of the dumpster. My concern is if that trailer leaves or if the pickup truck leaves to wherever job you're going to, that's going to be sitting there visible. And so I hear what Nick is saying about the screening over the storm sewer, and he did mention something about street trees on 23 Mile, which may help obscure it a bit from 23 Mile Road. But that's, I'm a little uncomfortable, and I'd like to hear some other commissioners' comments. I'm a little uncomfortable as it stands right now. So I'll open up. Any questions from, any comments from the commission?
I do have a question. Is there possibly another location where you could put this?
I've had the developer out there. We looked at some different areas. I don't, I mean, I could try to maybe bring it tight to the building, you know, tight to the backside of the building. I mean, I'm open to anything. I'll conform any way I can, you know. But that was kind of the only other spot we thought, you know, perhaps. If not tight to the building, I've got a row of parking back there. Maybe I could just, I've got plenty of parking in the front, plenty of parking on the side. Maybe I could just put the dumpster kind of directly behind my building. You wouldn't be able to see it from 23 Mile certainly at all. So I'm open.
So you're talking about running it parallel to the building, east to west, instead of north and south?
That was one of the thoughts, yeah.
I mean, I'm not against where it is, but I'm just concerned about the screening. And, you know, if you got, you got parking, cars that are parked there are going to screen it. Like I said, the trailer and the truck will screen it. It's just that when all that's gone, then it's going to be visible. That's the only concern.
Well, the trailer you're talking about that is screening it all the time is a recycle trailer. So that gets moved probably once a month, and it's brought recycling and then comes right back. So if it's gone, it's gone for three hours. It's not a trailer we take to a job site and leave for a week or anything like that. It goes to a recycling area, comes right back. So you'll see it there all the time.
Any of the commissioners have any questions or comments on this? Nick, what are your thoughts about relocating it to the, behind the building, making it run east-west instead of north-south?
Well, there's a couple of different options that were discussed. The first one I'll go over would be the parking spots next to the enclosure. While that is a viable option, I think accessing it for the, to be removed for a roll-off dumpster, you have more experience, Mr. Hotea, that might be difficult. But my primary concern there is that the building to the north has their front entrance facing that way. So facing into that parking lot, they're already facing trash enclosures. I would hate to also have them face an open dumpster as well. So I mean, while that might be a reasonable location, it's also kind of, I don't want to say disenfranchising the property to the north, but it doesn't, you know, necessarily give them the best view.
That's a good point, yeah.
Now, tucking into the building, that could be an option. I believe there are some door walls there, though.
Can get into the building?
Closer to the building, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, not inside the building, no. Tucking it closer to the north wall of the building, that might be an option. I believe there are some door walls on that north side that might make it difficult.
We have one overhead door, but it looks like there might be some room there. It's a loading zone right there.
Yes, I saw that on the site plan.
You know, that might work. I don't know.
So that is a potential location, but we don't want to also take up that loading/unloading zone. So like I said before, this is a difficult proposal for something that should be, you know, by right use. Without the screening, that's what makes this difficult to approve because technically it could be approved by right if you had screening there for the dumpster. But with the location it is with that storm sewer, it makes it difficult to add the screening that's required by the township. So really, I mean, as far as the alternate locations go, where they're proposing it, if they have to have it on site, that might be one of the better locations.
Having listened to what you said, I would tend to agree with you. Are you averse to putting any more plantings along 23 Mile Road as an option to give to the ZVA to screen it from 23 Mile Road?
I'm not averse to anything, other than not having it.
Instead of tucking it inside, you're averse to that, okay.
Tucking it inside, yeah. I'm open-minded. I'm sure we...
Anybody else have any questions or comments, suggestions? All right. If not, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Oppone?
Move to approve site plan number 24-22 for Richard Hotea, 14017 23 Mile Road, parcel number 23-07-13-382-001, located on the north side of 23 Mile Road, east of Shana Road, to allow the permanent roll-off dumpster. The use of a roll-off dumpster for the home remodeling business located at 14017 23 Mile Road is considered accessory outdoor storage consistent with the standards found within the section 4.13 of the zoning ordinance. Approval of the site plan is subject to the applicant complying with the conditions placed by the planning commission, including seeking approval from necessary variances. The planning commission officers has a favorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals to approve the variance foregoing the screening requirements of section 4.13.1C.2 for this use.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner, is there a second first?
Second.
All right, okay. Yes.
Can I ask that that motion be modified? Can we ask for additional screening then on 23 Mile Road?
I was going to ask a couple of things. First of all, if we could, and Julie, I mean, we, something about putting in there that the commissioner, or not, the petitioner has Smash My Trash twice a week. Maybe we put in there that the dumpster will be emptied no less than twice per week, which is what you're doing now, correct?
Yeah.
And then what about if we have the variance foregoing the screening? I think some more screening on 23 Mile Road, some bushes or plantings there might help. Are we, I think, are we going against ourselves? Because I do think we need something.
I don't think that's unreasonable to add a few more trees in that island right along 23 Mile. However, there's still have to go in front of the zoning board of appeals for a variance because it's not directly screened.
So to maybe amend, Mr.? So to maybe amend Mr. Appone's motion about the foregoing the screening requirements of section 4.13.1C.2, however, adding, uh, additional trees along 23 Mile Road or something like that, right?
Correct. That, that would be acceptable if the applicant is willing to do that.
So are we, are you speaking just like, right here somewhere?
Yep, something right in that area. If, if you're...
I don't have any issue with that at all. I, I own the building. I don't own, that's, that's actually, I think that's DiAgostini's, um, spot there. I'll, I'll talk to him and I, it doesn't matter. I'll...
Eastman?
Oh, it's a condo unit. I guess I'll ask our attorney. Welcome. What do we do if, if that is owned by, uh, Mr. DiAgostini? He would have to get approval from Mr. DiAgostini. He gave you approval for the dumpster. I'm sure he'll approve the trees, so.
Not gonna have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Not gonna pay for it.
You could recommend that to the ZBA, that you're offering, uh, your approval or your recommendation to waive the screening requirements, um, conditioned upon, um, him obtaining permission from the adjoining property owner to put additional screening on that portion and then, um, also conditioned upon the removal of by stump your...
Smash My Trash or something similar, yeah. So you're good with the twice a week and you're good to recommending approval, um, subject to the additional screening requirements along 23 Mile Road, getting permission from the property owner. You okay with that?
Yes.
Anthony, you good with that?
Yes.
Sal, okay. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Problem solved, we hope, so.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Sorry about that.
Have a great evening. Our last item is a site plan special land use number 24-05, Christian Ushkaj for Lucas Towing, 55725 22 Mile Road, located on the north side of 22 Mile Road, west of Shelby Road. Lucas Towing site modifications and outdoor storage. This is a public hearing. I'll have Commissioner Moore read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of a site plan special land use. Applicant, Christian Ukai, Lucas Towing, 5575 22 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48317. Proposed use, Lucas Towing, site modifications and outdoor storage. Location, 5575 22 Mile Road, like, located north of 22 Mile Road, west of Shelby Road. Site plan slash SLU number 24-05. Sidwell number 23-07-20-451-005. Legal description is as follows. Planning commission will meet on Monday, July 22nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Township Municipal Board, Boardroom, 52700 Van Dyke Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316-586-726-7243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the site plan special land use. The application for the site plan special land use may be examined at the planning and zoning department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on July 1st, 2024. There were 11 property owners and one applicant were notified by first-class mail on July 2nd, 2024.
Thank you, Raquel. Mrs. Davis, does the publication meet all legal requirements as stipulated in local ordinance and state statute? Can you explain the uses under the present zoning and if this special land use request is appropriate for the district?
This proposed use is, um, where the property is located in the heavy manufacturing district of the township. The proposed use is, uh, for a storage yard associated with the auto industry, which would be an appropriate use in the heavy, um, manufacturing district and therefore, um, but it does require special land use approval, so it's properly before the planning commission.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for our attorney? Do we get any correspondence, Raquel?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or his or her representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for their request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public and the petitioner may then make any concluding remarks. I see the petitioner is here, sir. State your name and re- address for the record and you may proceed.
Uh, good evening. My name is Paul Luzley. I'm with Spalding D. Decker Associates, uh, here on behalf of the applicant, uh, Lucas Towing. Um, the proposed, uh, project consists of, um, some modifications to an existing site. Lucas, uh, Towing purchased the building last year and are proposing these improvements to facilitate their towing and, and repair operation. Uh, some of the improvements, uh, include a, a new 10-by-10 dumpster enclosure, um, some modifications to the approach, uh, off of 22 Mile Road. Uh, we've worked with the road commission to realign that, make, uh, the entryway a little easier access. And then primarily, the main thing that, that, that is involved in this is, uh, a request for a .32 acre outdoor gravel storage area. Again, to facilitate their operation, they, uh, tow vehicles and repair them. And it'll be temporary storage of vehicles while they are working on and repairing them or having them towed elsewhere. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Any commissioners have any questions?
I do have a question.
Raquel, go ahead.
What type of, um, story, what would you store out in your outdoor?
It, it will be primarily vehicles, cars, trucks, trailers, things that are in for, that have been towed and, and/or need repair.
And how long approximately would those vehicles stay in that lot?
As long as the ones that are being worked on at the moment take to be completed. So I wanna say within mid-week or so. You know, depending how big the job is, it could be, you know, if we have a bunch of small jobs, they're gonna be, you know, cycled through, you know, every hour or so. But, you know, with larger jobs, they're gonna take about a week or so to be completed.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Is there a way to possibly pave that area? Say if it's leaking oil or fuel?
The concern there is some of, some of the vehicles are...
Go ahead, you finish, Mr. Baker.
There's, uh, you know, leaking oil or fuel along those lines, you know, you're not gonna probably see that in gravel or, or, you know.
You want, step up to the mic if you're gonna speak, name an address, or you did already, go ahead.
Absolutely. Um, so the, the reason for this, this is gonna be more so for our, um, semi-trailers, um, where we completely eliminate the oil, gases, those sorts of things being leaked out because the trailers just run on air and, you know, basically that, that's what supplies their whole system. Um, we also have another property way, you know, kitty corner to this one off in the back. Um, that is where we store our trucks mo- for the most part and cars now. Um, so this one's gonna be more so for the trailer focus, so we completely eliminated the gas and oil problem.
You're good, okay. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, you can sit down for a second, or you can rest. Um, I'm gonna open this to the mass audience we have here this evening, and I'm gonna read, this is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. We are a recommending body and the planning, and the township board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The township board will make the final decision on the special land use request. Now, I know the answer, but is there anybody in the audience wanting to come down and state for or against this plan? Once, twice, three times? No, hearing none. Bring it back up here. Nick, give us your review, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, so the applicant did a pretty good job of, uh, outlining exactly what they're proposing to do on the property. Uh, the uses proposed, the improvements proposed. So I'll give a little background to the site itself, the master plan for the area and the zoning district. Uh, the property is zone heavy manufacturing. Uh, it's HM with that zoning district, prominent outdoor storage, like what's proposed, is something that is, can be permitted in that property as a special land use. Uh, the property is designated as a transportation industrial zone in our master plan. Transportation industrial, as you can guess, uh, primarily focuses on vehicles and uses related to vehicles, whether that be towing, whether that be maintenance, whether that be purchasing, um, anything related to vehicles. Transportation industrial is our designated area in the master plan for that. As far as the modifications to the site, um, beyond the dumpster enclosure, changing the approach, adding the gravel storage area, there's also a number of trees being added to the site, um, stormwater improvements as well. That'll bring it up to the current standard that our engineers require. Um, this property did also go through a preliminary review where a majority of the regulatory and site review comments were addressed. Um, so there's very few that remain, but I'll go with them real quick for, you know, you to be aware of and for the planning commission as well. Uh, the first is that the prop- the proposed gravel storage area, the material must be approved by the planning commission. Um, noted on the site plan that there's not gonna be any irrigation. Uh, the zoning ordinance does require that all landscape and lawn areas are maintained with irrigation. Make sure that's indicated in there as well. And then something I wanted to note was the, it looks like there's three parking spots just northeast of the entrance, that kind of angle in there, about a 45-degree angle. Um, just with how those are situated on the entrance there, I'd recommend looking into removing those unless they're necessary. Just because when people are pulling out of those parking spots, we don't want someone pulling in and then hitting someone reversing, right? Might lead to a bad scenario. So those three spots might not be ideal there. Um, so either look into putting those somewhere else or just remove them because you have more than enough parking for the use. Um, and then, other than that, uh, make sure the sidewalk, I saw that it was revised from originally being seven feet to six feet. Make sure that's seven feet because there's a designated road along 22 Mile Road there. So we require a seven-foot wide sidewalk. Um, and then beyond that, I want to make sure that you're aware that any sort of storage of vehicles or supplies, material, anything that is going to be limited to that outdoor storage area. So now within the parking spots next to the building or behind the building itself, just the storage area. And then last thing is just identifying all the plantings with their botanical and common names, so we make sure they're not on our prohibited list of plantings and, um, we can approve them as you submit. That's all I have.
Okay. So you heard what the planner said. Do you have any concluding remarks, comments?
Um, no, we just appreciate your consideration of this. Uh, the applicant is, is, uh, trying to grow and expand his business in hopes that the community appreciates that.
Okay, very good. Anybody has any questions? I'll take a motion to, uh, close a public hearing?
So move.
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, the chairman advises the commission that the recommendation must be based on the following standards. The compatibility with the adjacent land use, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the ca- capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. Commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or we may table this tonight, based on the information we've received for further evaluation. At this time, motion is in order.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore?
I move to recommend approval for site plan special land use 24-05 for Christian Ukai for Lucas, of Lucas Towing, for the property located at 5575 22 Mile Road, parcel number 23-07-20-451-005, generally located on the north side of 22 Mile Road, west of Shelby Road. Lucas Towing site modifications and outdoor storage, subject to addressing the comments from the planning commission department and engineers' comments.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, thanks. All right, Julie, planning directors report. We gotta talk about hot dogs, huh?
Yes. Um, thank you, Chairman. So earlier this year on April 22nd, 2004, this gentleman, William Lozon, uh, came before you, uh, before this board for the hot dog, hot dog stand outside of Home Depot. As he was going through the building department comments, um, some of the comments were, um, very excessive in the requirements in meeting the building code. Um, he decided that some of the items he was able to address, but, um, the, the bigger items were not addressable. So to bypass this, um, some of the building code requirements, he was able to put it on, um, wheels. And if he puts it on some sort of a trailer, then he, he doesn't need to go through the building code. Um, he will be skirting the entire building, so you will not know that it's on a trailer. It has to be on wheels. Um, you will not know it's a trailer. It is the same concept and model that you see in your packet. Um, he has not changed anything else other than just it being on a trailer. Everything will be hitting, he had, actually, he had paid extra for the hitch on this to be enclosed within the building, so it does not look like anything, uh, like a movable shed.
All right.
That's it.
Fair enough. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, motion is in order, so we can start selling hot dogs again at Home Depot.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snyder.
Move to approve modification as proposed for site plan 24-14, William Lozon for Franks again, located at 8760 26 Mile Road, parcel number 230703102004, south of 26 Mile, west of M53 Expressway. Propose a hot dogs, proposing a hot dog stand.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Snyder, supported by Commissioner Lowry. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. All right, good enough. Anything else on your report, Julie?
No, no, I do not have any.
Nothing else, okay. No business on the floor, Mr. Snyder.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.